I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? Councilman Hinke, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Standing for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you. Melody, would you do roll call, please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilwoman Fish. Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Present. Make sure your cell phones are turned on silent or either airplane mode. Minutes for approval. Minutes for January 2nd, 2025 council meeting.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. Are there any corrections? Saying none, all those are favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and introductions. I don't know if this is where the mayor's office, Alex, wants to do this, or you want to do it at the end. All right, we'll do it at the end, okay. Unfinished business, there are no reports of council committees. Ordinance on second and third reading. Melody, would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-16 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-16, an ordinance appropriating $1,400,000 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund for the Street Department SALT Facility Design Build Construction Project.
Thank you. The motion is second to adopt this on second reading.
Still move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mrs. Hines. Council discussion. Mr. Hinke.
Presentation on the design itself. My question more specifically, Tori, would be for, as you noted, toll road is using a different style, not all wooden structure, and I wondered if we went down that road, if that's what you're doing.
Evening, Councilor Tori Owen, Public Works and Utilities. Mike is also here to help answer any questions. So, we did a different delivery method on this. Typically, we do a design bid-build process. On this one, we went through a different process of selecting a contractor, and we gave them the leeway to propose to us the cheapest, most effective option. So, we looked at hoop structures, which is similar to what they use on the toll road. We looked at domes. Ultimately, what was proposed to us is basically a shed that looks very similar to the way it looks now. The only difference being there'll be kind of a divider in the middle to separate the salt from the sand, so.
I'm looking, then, besides cheapest is the average length of life, because it seems like other people have gone to that dome style. And I'm wondering, as municipalities, why they are doing it, how it differs from us mainly. This one's built in '74. Can't really complain about that. So, if we knew average length of life, you know, and obviously divide its cost over the years of service, cost per year.
We expect this one to last longer than 50 years. This one will, so the old one was a wood structure. This one will not be a wood structure, it will be concrete and steel.
And then, associated costs. So, then we're looking at 1.4 million?
That's correct, yep.
Total?
That will include the demo and removal of the existing facility, which is the old treated lumber that is difficult to dispose of, so.
And how much is the demo removal?
They didn't break out that specifically in the cost.
Okay, so let me go this way.
Before you do that, does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Mishler.
Yes, what's the expected timeline for this?
They have been told that we need a new salt facility by the beginning of this winter. And in the event that they are unable to deliver that, they have to come up with some sort of temporary storage measure for our salt and sand.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hinke.
So, have you looked at that other style?
We did, we looked at all of the styles. We said, give us what's the most cost-effective, and this is what they came back to us with.
What was your opinion comparatively? Because I haven't seen the style lately.
My opinion is that this is the more durable, longer-lasting type of facility. The hoop facilities largely have plastic membranes, and that's just not, in my opinion, something that's going to hold up over the years, so.
So, the average length of life is considerably shorter?
Well, if you talk to the manufacturer, they'll tell you, they'll give you one side of the story, right?
One size fits all.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Curry.
Tori, see, where we had three proposals, and you've already picked the one you think is best of the three?
That's correct, and it also happened, just by circumstance, to be the cheapest as well, so.
Cheapest as well?
Yep.
I would like to say the less expensive.
The most cost-effective.
There you go, I like that better.
And the best quality?
And the best quality.
Best quality, as long as it's the best quality, because I'm concerned about the toll road, you know, since we don't control that no more.
All right, thank you, thank you, Tori. Is anyone in the audience, I'd like to open up to the public, is anyone in the audience would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Saying none, return it back to council floor. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish. Not here. Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion from Mr. Mishler, second from Mr. Crabtree, for third and final. Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-16, an ordinance appropriating $1,400,000 and zero dollars, zero cents, from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund for the Street Department SALT Facility Design Build Construction Project. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-17 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-17, an ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the city to issue one or more series of its economic development tax increment revenue bonds relating to a housing project to be located in the Boulder Run Economic Development Area, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
I get a motion to second to adopt this on second reading.
Motion to adopt on second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hines, they're second. Second by Mrs. King, council discussion. Mr. Hinke.
In relationship to Gene Wood proximity. And this was...
Good evening, Council. Mike Huber, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. Yes, Councilman Hinke, this is the same development, Boulder Run development, in the Gene Wood Drive, Hinke Street area. The, you guys passed the confirmatory resolution creating the TIF last meeting, and this is just issuing the TIF bond.
From my understanding, there are three, or two other developments in that same particular area from other contractors?
No, this is a single, this is a site for the contractors, for the developers. They're buying the bond.
Right, but separately, there are two other contractors with properties and builds in that same general area, same side of the street?
Existing, pre-existing home developers right now, or?
So, I was sent a photograph of a, by a developer in regards to two other partials of property acreage that is going to be developed into housing in that same particular zone.
Okay. I'm not aware, they haven't reached out to the city for any assistance at all?
So, they are not getting $3.5 million or cooperating in any way or ask for any assistance?
They have not approached the city for any kind of assistance for their project, correct?
I'm just asking us because it also is their traffic on top of this build traffic, and it's a much larger issue than what we have thought if there are two other builders building 50 homes.
I would have to double-check with Eric on terms of any kind of subdivisions that have been planted recently and the number of lots.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Saying none, I'd like to wish Mr. Huber a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Again, happy birthday.
Really?
At this time, I'd like to open up for the public, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Saying none, return it back to the council floors, or any of the council discussion. Saying none, Melody, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion for third and final, I got a motion for Mrs. Hines, they're second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Crabtree. Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-17, an ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the city to issue one or more series of its economic development tax increment revenue bonds relating to a housing project to be located in the Boulder Run Economic Development Area, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
King.
King, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines. Thank you. Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-18 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-18, an ordinance appropriating $1,327,621.32 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund to other funds account, and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund.
I get a motion to second.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines, council discussion. Tori, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tori.
Hi, Councilor Tori Owen, Public Works. So, both of these next two ordinances, this one and the following one, are for the same thing. It's just the way that the Controller's Office breaks up the receipt of the funding. So, we received a community crossing matching grant for three projects to resurface or redo, reconstruct Stevens and Francis, which are the old-style granite concrete, which I'm sure none of you have the great experience of trying to remove, but it is hard as rock, literally. You can't saw it, you can't grind it, you can't do much with it, I don't know. So, we turned that into a CCMG project because of the level of effort and cost it will take to remove it and then reconstruct it. And then, as well, Second Street through all of downtown will be milling filled up from the south side of downtown up to Jackson, and then from Jackson north, I think it's concrete, so we'll be taking the concrete out and replacing it with asphalt. That is part of the effort towards our conversion of Second Street to two-way. It needs to happen before we do Third Street, which is coming up in the next two years. It's going to be the detour route for Third Street, so it needs to be two-way during the detour, and that's part of the reason for getting that done now, so.
Tori, I mean, I'm sorry.
All right. What kind of timeline are we looking at here for this? There's a lot of construction going on all over the city, so what can we look forward to here?
July.
July?
July for Second Street, July through September. Stevens and Francis, we gave them a more flexible window, basically, end of October to get those two projects done, but Second Street will begin in July.
And will the Second Street changes be including any center medians or anything like that?
No, they will, it will include restriping from one-way to two-way, obviously. Angle parking on the east side of the road, and then some landscaping will be coming, changes to which intersections are signalized. We're going to keep Franklin and Jackson and Lexington signalized. The others may become four-way stops or two-way stops, so.
Sounds great, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, thank you, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Saying none, I return it back to the council. Any further council discussion? Saying none, Melody, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Got a motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Mishler, for third and final. Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-18, an ordinance appropriating $1,327,621.32 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund to other funds account, and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you please read proposed ordinance 25-0-19 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-19, an ordinance appropriating $2,219,895.95 from the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund for the reconstruction of segments of Stevens Avenue, Francis Avenue, and Second Street under the Community Crossing Matching Grant Program.
I get a motion to second to adopt this ordinance.
Still move, second.
Got a motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Crabtree, council discussion. As Tori indicated, this is part of the first, the previous ordinance that we just passed. Seeing no council discussion, I'll open up to the public, is there any in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Saying none, I return it back to the council. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
I got a motion for Mr. Crabtree, second for Mrs. Hines, for third and final. Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-19, an ordinance appropriating $2,219,895.95 from the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund for the reconstruction of segments of Stevens Avenue, Francis Avenue, and Second Street under the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman, uh, King.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. There are no ordinances or resolutions referred to the committee, there are no tabled ordinances or resolutions. Would you read proposed ordinance on first reading, 25-0-20 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-20, an ordinance annexing certain real estate, commonly known as vacant land, situated on Greenleaf Boulevard and vacant land at the east end of Vernon Avenue, and declaring the same to be a part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
No objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0, I mean, 21, please, by title?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-21, an ordinance annexing certain real estate, commonly known as Elkhart East Area C and E, intersection of County Road 6 and County Road 17, Elkhart, Indiana, 46514, a declaration and declaring the same to be a part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
No objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Resolutions, would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-15 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-15, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alliance RV LLC, Three Creek LLC, are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R-0821 and R-1421. numbers R 0821 and R 1421.
Resolution will refer to, will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-16 by title?
Proposed resolution 25-r-16, a resolution of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alliance RV LLC, Three Creek LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 819, R 919, and R 1019.
Thank you. This resolution will be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you read proposal ordinance 25-r-17 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-17, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alpha Systems LLC, DVS LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 1320, R 4420, and R 4520.
Thank you. This resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-18 by title, please?
Proposed resolution R, 25-r-18, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether E O Z Business LLC is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, real property, CF-1 Form CF-1 RP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 3820, R 3920, and R 4020.
Thank you. This resolution will be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you read proposed resolution 25-r-19 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-19, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Flexible Concepts Incorporated is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, personal property, Form CF-1 PP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 5121, R 5721, and R 5821.
Thank you. This resolution will be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you read proposed resolution 25-r-20 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-20, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Hull Lift Truck Incorporated is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Elkhart County Resolution Number CC-2021-13 and CC-2021-16.
Thank you. There are no objections. This will be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you read proposed resolution 25-r-23 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-21, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Kim Crest LLC, LA Isla Bonita Properties LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 1716, R 4916, and R 5016.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee as well. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-r-22 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-22, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Marson International LLC is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 522, R 622, and R 722.
Thank you. This resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you read proposed resolution 25-r-23 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-23, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether SCG Acquisitions Company LLC, DBA Speed Grip Chuck Company, Swanee Precision Holdings LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, personal property, Form F-1-PP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 0524, R 0624, and R 0724.
Resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you read proposed resolution 25-r-24 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-24, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Treaded Tire and Wheel Company Incorporated is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, personal property, Form CF-1/PP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 3818, R 4218, and R 4318.
Thank you. This will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you read proposed resolution 25-r-25 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-25, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether American Technology Components Incorporated, ATC, 1127 Miles Avenue LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 5221, R 5521, and R 5621.
Thank you. This resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Proposed resolution 25-r-26, would you read that by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-26, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Marine Realty LLC, DBA Bennington Marine South is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, real property, CF-1 Form CF-1 RP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 44-22, R 48-22, and R 49-22.
This resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-27 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-27, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Elkhart Concord LLC is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, real property, CF-1 Form CF-1 RP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under the resolution numbers R 3323, R 3423, and R 3523.
Thank you. This resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-28 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-28, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Playcon Corporation is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 1420, R 2720, and R 2820.
Thank you. This resolution will be referred to committee. Would you please read proposed resolution 25, Tax Abatement Committee, the same one that all of them want to. Proposed resolution 25-r-29 by title, please. Thank you, Eric.
Proposed resolution 25-r-29, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Treaded Tire and Wheel Company Incorporated is in substantial compliance with its statement of benefits, personal property, Form CF-4 PP, and the memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 3818, R 4218, and R 4318.
This resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-30 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-30, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether PECF Enterprises Incorporated, DBA Triangle Rubber Company LLC, NY Guild LLC are in substantial compliance with its statement of benefit forms and memorandum of agreement approved under resolution numbers R 5324, R 5624, R 5724.
Resolution will be referred to the Tax Abatement Committee. Would you please read proposed resolution 25-r-31 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-31, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting a risk written fiscal plan to define a policy for the provision of services to the area commonly known as vacant land situated on Greenleaf Boulevard and vacant land at the east end of Vernon Avenue, a proposed annexation area.
This resolution will be referred to, I'm sorry. This is not the one, I had carried away. All right. All right. Go right ahead, Huber. Go right ahead.
Don't move.
Got a motion and a second to adopt this resolution.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Mishler. I was on the roll. I'm sorry. Mr. Huber.
Thanks again. Mike Huber, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. The two, the next two resolutions relate directly to the ordinances that you heard on first reading related to two different separate annexations of properties. Included in your packets were fiscal plans for both of those annexations. The timing of those fiscal plans were back in April and May when they were filed. At that time, we didn't, the consultant who helps us hadn't factored in SB1 implications yet. As it went through Plan Commission, I know Councilman Mishler asked to have some implications or impacts of SB1 added to those and have them updated. We worked diligently with Baker Tilly to make sure we could understand what those are. I distributed earlier this evening copies of the updated fiscal plans. I don't expect you to have had a chance to compare or review them that quickly. However, I do have a summary of some of those changes. I will start by saying they are very, very minimal all across the board, and none of them have any direct fiscal implications that would change the equation on whether or not these annexations will have the fiscal capability to cover the costs associated with providing services to these areas. Largely, just generally, a quick statement before we get into the first one here with Wrangler annexation. Just an overview, the Senate Enrolled Act Number One included a number of changes to both property tax credits and deductions. That also has some changes to business personal property taxes. However, for the purposes of tonight's discussion, we're really just talking about with annexation real property. So we'll only address those ones that address or impact these from a real property standpoint. And to note that annexation is a way for the city to grow its AV base of AV. Given the future implications of SB1 citywide and the impacts of credits and deductions on reducing the city's AV, this is one tool the city has to be able to negate or mitigate some of the potential future impacts of tax rates going up based on our wonderful city, our state tax levy system. If you saw the video earlier this year, you'll kind of remember a little bit what I'm talking about. First, so the Wrangler annexation is the first one. It's three parcels for a single-family home. There's currently an old former home site that makes up for it. The developer working on this who approached us and asked for this annexation is the same developer who's developing the Boulder Run development. So they also previously annexed the land immediately adjacent to this, to the west in an annexation last year, and this is just the final piece of that annexation. I think there were some contiguity challenges that prohibited them from being able to bring this in with the last one. So just overall, again, you'll see in the fiscal impact report, it's vacant land right now. There's very little AV. There's very little cost of services. And so basically, the changes and the future costs, the future AV growth and future tax dollars brought in by the development will more than offset the additional costs associated with serving the neighborhood. Generally, the minimal changes between the two reports, if you look at column one on page 11, there were some assumptions in how they calculated estimated net assessed value of the annexation area. It was, the original report projected that the AV growth would be at 2%, that the city would exercise the 4% controlled levy growth rate, which has been typical of recent past history. The new report shows similar 2% AV growth rate, keeping the 4% controlled levy growth rate. 2020 Senate Bill One did in fact set that growth rate at 4% for 2026. It did not set a growth rate for 2027 and beyond. It reverts back to the old formula, which is why Baker Tilly kept it at the 4%, which was what was happening in the recent past anyway. But it does factor in those credits and deductions authorized by Senate Bill One into that assessed valuation number. So largely, you know, the annexation area current AV noted on page two is unchanged. The additional costs, which are currently limited to minimal increases in street and police, are also unchanged between the reports. And there is a slight increase in AV in page 2028, which declines in 29 and 30. That makes sense as the homestead deduction phases out, as the new standard, or, I can't remember the name, the other deduction, the regular deduction phases up to a two-thirds of the AV, so by 2031. So those are the primary differences between the two reports, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So we're saying the county has no TIF or other allocation that we would have to consider?
Not in this one, correct.
Okay. And then our break-even point for the amount of money that will be invested?
So the cost of services is a thousand, little, right around a thousand dollars, 700, 600, 700 dollars is what the cost of services are.
You're just going to cover that and we're done?
The growth in the AV does, for sure. Yeah.
Okay. And then expected revenue, appreciate that. No other surprises on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Huber? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Melody, would you do a roll call on adoption of this resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed resolution 25-r-32 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-r-32, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan to define a policy for the provision of services to the area commonly known as Elkhart East Areas C and E, intersection of County Road 6 and County Road 17, Elkhart, Indiana, 46514, a proposed annexation area.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution.
Don't move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Crabtree, council discussion. This is following the previous resolution. Mr. Hinke.
Are there any changes to this one with regard to county?
Sorry, do we move on to the next one? Did you do the first one on second, third? Oh, you just do one. Sorry. Never mind. Sorry. Yeah, so I have a few updates here. So this annexation area, apologize, this annexation area extends the next phase of the Elkhart East, north of County Road 6, south of the toll road, between County Road 19, and on the west side of County Road 17 as well. So we're getting the Casys and, you know, up to the toll road on both sides. This area is primarily industrial and commercial uses. Those fall under the 3% tax cap rate for those folks. The new Senate Bill One does not have deductions or credits related to 3% tax property. Those are all for the residential pieces. So again, this one sees very, very minimal impacts in terms of reduction of future growth related to SB1. I'd like to just point out that there were some changes in some of the assumptions in the first one. The Baker Tilly in the first report was pretty aggressive in projecting a 5% city AV growth over the coming five years. They reduced that down to 2% from 5%. They kept again the 4% controlled levy growth rates as mandated in '26 by the Senate Bill and by using the formula for the remaining years. The current AV is unchanged between the reports. The additional cost is unchanged. As the levy continues to grow within the controlled growth rates, it brings in additional revenues, so the levy grows, and at the same time, tax rates do increase because we see throughout the rest of the city with the reductions based on SB1, as I said, those rates have to go up because of the way the levy system works. But because we're annexing this property, we're actually adding to the city's AV and mitigating those broader, larger tax rate increases that the city would see. And those are the primary changes in this one.
Thank you. More questions? Mr. Hinke.
Yeah, and then with that said, what is the, I'm looking for the page that has the annual projected cost of services total annually, not just the startup, because I'm assuming the developers covering all fees for water extensions and those.
If there would any be, if there would be any in there, yeah. In this case, it's about $6,200. Sorry, that's on page 12. It's about $6,000 with an annual 3% inflation growth rate. So we're going to make about $180,000 a year on this, an additional levy, and the costs are going to go up by 6,000 a year.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Coats.
Mike, I'm just making a point. Which fire station would cover this area a few years from now?
Sure. So this would fall under the territory of Fire Station 6, which we are moving closer to this area, correct?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Open up for the public hearing. Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. Any more council discussion? Seeing none, Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings. Other new business report, Mayor Board of Works, Alex.
Council President, Arvis Dawson, was so kind to invite us to introduce a new member who has come to the mayor's office. I'm Alex Otto, Director of Communications, and we are welcoming Daniela Morales to our team. So she'll be with me a lot, and so you'll interact quite a bit with the city council. She just graduated from Ball State with a degree in communications and PR, and she's going to be going to Notre Dame to get her master's in the fall. So we're going to indoctrinate her over the summer into city way and hopefully snag her out of that master's program. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. Would you like to say anything? Are you good?
Happy to be here, and if you need anything from me, just let me know, even though I just started, so, yeah.
Thank you. And welcome, welcome. Thank you, welcome. All right. Neighborhood Association reports. Latanya, Ms. King.
Well, I just want to comment on the, what would they be, for the, gosh, Elkhart Jazz Fest?
Yes.
Okay. So that's from the 19th through the 22nd. We have our headliner, Diana Craw. We're really excited about her. And also too, so it's going to be a whole vibe all weekend. Also have a RV group, camping group coming into town, NARVA, N-A-A-R-V-A. They'll be staying at the Elkhart City, what is it, Elkhart Campgrounds, County Road Four.
County Road Four, yes.
And they will be touring the manufacturing plants, RV manufacturing sites, and also Tolson. So if you get a chance, if you want to go out to the campgrounds, and they would love to visit with you, and they're so excited. This is their first visit here, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to report for the PMoran Neighborhood Association. And the PMoran Neighborhood Association haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, but the neighbors tend to come together and address the issues in our neighborhood, and we call each other when there's a problem in there. We've had a couple of police actions in our neighborhood. You know, one morning, 5:30 one morning, there was five policemen in our neighborhood had Hawthorne Drive blocked. And of course, they called me and woke me up, and we went down to see what was going on, found out that one of the neighbors had a trailer on his truck that had a stolen license plate, had been stolen, they said, for over a year. And they addressed that, and since then, we haven't seen that neighbor's truck and trailer sit there anymore. And also, we had a situation at Prairie and Harold at a rental house, of course, and there were seven policemen there that Sunday. And what we heard was that a guy was walking down Prairie on our new sidewalk we built and had his dog with him, and five guys came out of the rental house and beat him up, so he went home and got a gun. So that's why the policeman was there. Of course, we were all down there checking it out, and then a big storm came. But, you know, it's just good, though, that the neighbors are concerned that they come to the scene and try to find out what's going on and what we need to address in the future to try to keep these things from happening in our neighborhood. And also, we thankful to Officer Byas, who, if you come down Hawthorne Drive and dying hard right now, there's a police car sitting there, been sitting there now for about a week and a half, and we kind of like that. It gets people's attention and let them know that the police are watching our neighborhood. You know, we even suggested that that happened in other neighborhoods, and I know it happened in a couple, and the one said it didn't make a difference, but we personally think it makes a difference in our neighborhood. Police can't be there all the time, but that car gets everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Hines?
I would like to, just on behalf of the Ben Oak Neighborhood or HOA, our last meeting in May, well, we had several department heads there. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And it also kind of felt like they were getting beat up, not like physically, but like they had a laundry list of just neighborhood concerns, suggestions, whatever you want to, however you want to word that. But they do want, they wanted me to send a message. They apologized because they knew their list was very long. They just didn't take into a fact that, you know, it was going to make for a long meeting to address all of those, you know, sidewalks, streets, you know, trees and speeding, and so it just took for a long meeting. Brent was there with me, and so they wanted me to just say thank you, thank you, and kind of sorry for the impression of having so many concerns, so, thank you.
Anyone else, Neighborhood Association? Mr. Crabtree?
Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association met two weeks ago in the triangle, South Strong, Strong and Highland. Our guest speaker was Tim Visstein, Building Commissioner, who provided enlightenment to the residents of what was needed, what to keep up, what to report. The one thing that I got out of it, and I want to encourage residents, is to please do not blow your grass clippings in the road. Compost them, put them in the trash, but that's a detriment to motorcyclists, which I am not, but still be courteous of that. And also, we've created a committee for the use of the triangle. We're working with the Parks Department, either a statue, a bench, or something, so that small triangle, it's not really conducive to playground equipment for kids, but just for residents who are walking their dogs, maybe have a picnic, you know, doodle, do whatever in that area, so we're working on that. So our next meeting is in September.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Anyone else? Seeing none?
New business or just?
Associations. Do you have some new business, David? I might have missed that. Right ahead.
Thank you. And I appreciate, you know, most of you are on the more positive side than myself. I'm more critical, I think, of certain things that we can improve upon, because I know we can. But I do appreciate hearing all the fanfare and those things. However, there's a lot that we need to pay attention to. I just have two things early on, and then I've had five calls from outside my district, and I'm assuming that folks know about it. We just need conclusions, otherwise I'm not sure why they're calling me from other districts. First, is there a new air conditioner in this building already?
No, it's not. There's being, as you can tell, there's no air.
I just noticed a lot of hot air coming from this area.
Everybody else thinks it's coming from that corner, but okay, keep going.
And then, so as it goes, my first call was about code enforcement, and this would be in South Side District, just saying that people just said they tried to improve their home, and the city is not following up on the obligation of others. I did not disagree with them, because I actually agree with that. I do have one that questioned that one council member here is not living within their district, and they had brought it to leadership and was essentially shut down. I don't know the answer. I don't know the interest.
David, could you be more specific? There was a vague comment.
Yes. There was given to me that councilperson King was not living in her district, and I don't know how to answer that.
You don't have.
Sorry?
You don't have to.
So there was that one, because they said they had brought it up, and I don't know that it was concluded, but it was called to me. And then, we had three calls in regards to shootings. Friday night, there were shots fired, Garfield on Friday night, and police were involved. The house was identified where the people went. The shooters were identified. There was some return fire. They shot at a dog, and this was in the Ulrey School Corner, and we really didn't hear anything about that one. But one night later, we did have this other shooting, which is, it's too frequent. I think the mayor did a good job saying this is senseless and all of those things, but it doesn't get us to an action plan of what we're going to do about it. And people gave me timelines, and they do have videos of this, and I appreciate their involvement and wanting their city to be better. But someone else came to a conclusion that I thought was very good. Every year, there's a block party, and every year, the police have to come and try to disperse the crowd, but every year, they get another permit. And I'm wondering about our permit process that would allow that to happen, and I don't know that answer. But I know there are people and neighbors in that area that are very highly concerned. And my suggestion, I think really, one of the gentlemen that called suggested a police officer stay in the Garfield area, because it's just a hotbed at this time, and it seems very appropriate considering what has been happening there in multiple, well, Friday and Saturday nights. I mean, what do we want as proof? I'm just asking for an action plan to give some relief to the good people that live in that area, and we just need to be attentive and hearing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Ms. King, I'm sorry.
You mentioned the South Side, but you didn't say what district, and whoever district it is, you need to let the councilperson know so we can get in touch with the constituent.
Yeah, that would be your district and Mr. Curry's district. Your district and Mr. Curry's.
Well, David, what you need to do is, yeah, you need to.
I was going to send you an email so you would have it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd rather next time you just say it in advance so I can make contact with the person, because I am very, you know, hands-on and with my constituents.
So the only reason this was brought is because they said they have reached out.
But David, you keep saying they said.
No, I don't know who you're referring to. Otherwise, I follow up with all of my constituents.
Yeah, yeah. If we can get names and addresses, that's what we should be doing, referring them to those councilpeople.
Yeah, if, should they wish, I would question why they didn't call you direct.
And if Aaron, for example, if I get a call and someone has a concern and it's not my district, for example, I've received a couple of calls in Aaron's district, I would send Aaron a text and call him and give them that phone number. So I would prefer if you would do that versus coming to council.
Yeah.
And not having a name where we could have resolved something, we would have had a conversation, and it could have been aired out.
So let me just say, this is five calls. It's unusual that I get this.
Well, but you have my number.
And so did they, and they said they reached out and didn't get anywhere.
They called you, and in common courtesy, you could have emailed me or called me, and you know we can have a conversation.
Well, common courtesy was I brought it up.
No, but you brought it up.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
You know what?
Let's, let's, let's.
Find out why they don't call you.
You've already, you've made your point. You've made your point, both of you, so we've got to move on. Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on anything that was not on the council agenda tonight?
I need to sign.
Good evening.
Look here. At 11, at, at.
Steven, state your name and address.
Yeah, Stephen L. Robinson, Sr., 513 West Garfield Avenue.
Thank you.
I've been to Mrs. King's house many times, never there, never there, to make a complaint about what's going on in her district, never at her house. My mama lives down the street from you. Your car's never there. We knock on your door, you never answer. I haven't called you, but, you know, I don't, because we need more than just our streets cleaned up and little flags put in the yard. It's a bigger job than that. At 11:30, I called, at 11:15, I called the police on Saturday night, asking for how long the permit would be allowed for the party at the Applewhite's house. Officer D. Block told me that she believes that the curfew for that party was 12 o'clock. The police passed by the house at 11:30 with seven police cars, with the lights blaring and shining, lit it up like a football field. Twenty minutes later, they left. The crowd did not scatter. They were still there. I called again, four more times. The last time I called was 11:01, and I complained to the dispatcher that they're gathering in the alley. They got red hoodies on and gray hoodies on, and I'm concerned about what's going on in the alley off of Compton in Garfield. Because on Friday night, I was in the alley with my dog, and two black guys were walking down the alley, and they shot at my dog. The house that they came from was 1516 Sixth Street, right on the corner of Ulrey School in the alley, which has been a constant problem for the neighborhood. These are renters. Police had been there several times. They blocked the alley where you can't even drive your car through there. And I also noticed that the city car that goes through can't get through. It's a truck that I believe that takes care of the playground. I don't understand why that's continually going on. I don't understand why at 11:30, when the police came with all those cars, that the party was still going on. I don't understand that. With all those lights and all that, over 200 to 300 people at this party, and they left with nobody. They left like they came, lights shining and bright, party still going on, people still pulling up two blocks away from the party in front of my door and our house, our home, and getting out, walking to the party. That night, when the shots went out on Friday, I know I'm jumping, I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous, you know, I'm shell shocked. I'm more upset. Y'all, the police people that shot at Mo, that's my dog, that I used to walk around the neighborhood late at night to try and keep an eye on the graffiti banners. We're not looking to police anybody. We're not looking to arrest, make a citizen's arrest. We're just trying to keep our property safe. I've had two cars shot at in bullet holes in the house, so we just trying to deter that. But on that same Friday, six Hispanics on the back of my garage, and they were talking and saying they were looking for a phone, so I gave them a flashlight. You know, I'm trying, I told them, okay, don't write on my garage, it's already graffiti. I said, if you do, put something nice on there, is what I told them to try to calm them down, because I didn't want them to hurt me. I don't know these people. So I gave them a flashlight. Two minutes later, there's shooting in somebody's returning fire at this address, Sixth Street, 1516. I reported that. The police came down. They came down with guns and rifles. Nobody was arrested. Everything still squeezed as far as they're concerned. So I'm already on high alert. There already was a situation on Friday with gunshots. So why not keep the patrol on Sixth and Garfield up? Why not, when you park, and let me tell you something, I appreciate the police, I appreciate Mayor Robinson and the city council, I appreciate all of y'all. I'm not here to fight with y'all. I'm not here to criticize you like I have in the past. I'm a little older now, so I understand, don't bite the hand that feeds you. But I'll tell you what, when you're not doing what you need to be doing, and you're not man enough, a woman enough, to the problems that are facing our neighborhood, then I have to question. I have to come and talk to you in a good way. He'd have taught me, don't fall out over politics. Don't stay mad at people, especially your brother and sister. But this is what happened on Friday. So on Saturday night, I called the police at 11:30. They came, they left. The party's still going. I called them at 1:01, the party's still going on. The police dispatch told me, we've got six cars already out there. Now wait a minute. At 1:01, if you're already there, then why do you need to say you came after the shots, you were there? Why were the people still congregating? Arvis Dawson told me, well, we cleared it at 11. We cleared the public space. There's no way that space was cleared. There's no way you can fit that many people on Applewhite's property. There were 200 to 300 people out there, and they were not made to leave. And had they left at 11:30, 12 people would be free and safe. Not one person would be dead today had they not dispersed that party. But I want to know what gave them the ability to keep that party going on past 11:30 or past the curfew of that permit? Why wasn't the crowd dispersed? Why weren't the people made to go on? They vandalized people's property, they shot bullets, kids could have been hurt, women could have been killed. I don't understand what's going on and why we are allowing this and allowing these people to do what they're doing. And I appreciate y'all listening to me, but this is real business. We need to do something about it. The last time I was here, I came in and I put a hood on, and it upset you, Mr. Dawson, because you were not used to seeing it, because you live downtown. But I'm, they're walking around with book bags and hoodies on, the book bags, they ain't got no books in them, but they can't even read. But they got book bags, and you know they're up to nothing, they're not up to any good. But you know what? When you see that, I'm not saying stop and frisk, but I am saying, let's keep an eye on that guy, keep an eye on that girl. We're getting plagued by graffiti on Garfield. We're, we're getting plagued by graffiti on, on Garfield, we're getting plagued by gunshots, it's, it's so many times that you get used to it. I wasn't raised like that, I don't appreciate being used to gunfire, gun, gunshots, my wife jumps and, and falls to the ground, I don't, because I'm used to it. Why do I have to get used to that? Why is that okay? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Steven. Appreciate it. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on anything falling, that wasn't on the agenda? Seeing none, we turn it to the council floor, scheduling of committee meetings. Mr. Mishler?
Yes, thank you. The Tax Abatement Committee will be meeting June 18th in council chambers at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for acceptance of communications?
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines, accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Got a motion from Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Mishler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.